Six thirty-three, and I'll call this a regular city council meeting to order. It is October the fifth, two thousand twenty-three. And I will call, rocall, Mayor Protan Villalobos. Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler.
Here.
Councilmember McClaff.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I am Mayor Clay, so if you would please stand for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then to the Texas.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And then please remain standing for the invocation. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord God, thank you so much for the rain. And Lord God, we do lift up those that are sick tonight and are unable to be here. Heavenly Father, we do praise you and thank you for the gift of salvation. And we ask for your guidance and your discernment on all of the things that we do tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Okay, so we're gonna start with public comments. And Mary Beth Harper was not able to be here, so she emailed her remarks in. Um, I think if the council doesn't mind, I'll ask next when. We may just put her down as a, as a report, since she does this every meeting. She said, "Thank you for the proclamation about World Teachers' Day. Our teachers work tirelessly with little appreciation and very low pay. Vote yes on Proposition Nine on the upcoming constitutional election. It will provide cost of living adjustments for retired teachers." And then the second item, library news. Solar Eclipse Party is January, October fourteenth, from eleven AM to one PM. We have solar viewing classes as well as activities for all. Saturday, October twenty-first, is Spend the Day in Martindale. There'll be a fall festival from ten AM to noon with the bouncy house, train rides, and games. There, it's also a fundraiser for friends of the library from ten to one. They'll have a silent auction and a raffle, and she said lots of nice items. Third is the San Marcos River Foundation fundraiser from one to five, I guess that same day. And then she talks about the Veterans' Day, Saturday, November eleventh. Fiji Fraternity from Texas State University will do cleanup of veterans' yards and do any outside chores. The library will collect names of veterans or their widows who need help. So, call the library if you're a veteran. Jared can call them, but they might not want to go to New Broncos or Shirts. And then Downtown Tree Line Eating is Friday, December the first. Santa will ride through all the neighborhoods. After the parade, Santa will take pictures and listen to children's wish lists. And so that's from Mary Beth Harper.
Thanks.
Okay, so our next public comment is Sam Clayton.
Go on up, Sam.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow councilmembers, mayor, and members of the board. I'm giving you a fiscal year wrap-up of parts. A butterfly garden has been planted in Allen Bates Park from plants that were purchased by the city. Butterfly weed, lantana, Mexican fire bush, hamelia patents, and Katie Ruelia, retonia, and pheonias rock rose. And one that's very attractive, a Duranta golden dew dewdrop, has been planted, as well as esperanza. So, I mulched the whole bed, and it's on the right side of Allen Bates Park, where we have a bench there, and that actually was a designated native garden many years ago in order to receive certain grants to, and so I have replaced the native garden. Also, the child swing that was broken in the playground has been replaced. Thank you to the city. The city also purchased, I picked them up at Lowe's, three garden benches at Gardiola Park. And also planted lantana bushes at Gardiola Park, and I fixed the split rail fence where the post was broken. I also planted a red oak tree at Allen Bates Park that died. The live oak tree that was there from our LCRRA Blue Bonnie grant died, so I replaced it with a very nice tree that only cost one million dollars. I also tightened the bolts on all the structures of the playground. Friday, the city also purchased fifteen yards of playground fiber, which will be delivered on Friday and placed into the landscape playground beds on Saturday. And I will probably have to sing to people that helped me last year do it this year. But if you're driving by the park with a rake, maybe you can help us. The water supply valve also, there's a valve in the driveway that needs to be raised up, and then gravel needs to be put there. I'll speak more on that later. Also, the city purchased, with my help and instruction, several hand tools. We have rakes, shovels, garden gloves, and pruners. The city also purchased more T-posts to put up signs that are still lacking in the, in those areas of the park. Probably by next city council meeting, I'll be mentioning about the Park Mobile Act money, and hopefully it can be transferred back from the general fund into the restricted park fund. No more topic on that. Thank, thank you so much to the mayor and the police force for the national night out. Also, I wanted, and it was a great success. And I want to also thank Tom Futch for doing all the cooking. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay, Sonia.
Hello, everyone. So, um, I'm sorry to be like a Debbie downer, but it is what it is. But right now, we have three dogs loose in the community. There was four this morning. A neighbor's dog had gotten out and was roaming with a pack. But anyway, they did kill one of my chickens. We have another one that's missing. One of our neighbor's chickens is missing. But we were able to also see, like, paw prints where they're going around our coop and, like, preying on them. So just be careful with the dogs. They are aggressive. To me, they are aggressive because they're killing our, they're killing our chickens. So that's a form of aggression. So they are aggressive dogs, whether they were dumped, or they're hungry, or they need water, or whatever. I mean, I don't know, like, what the case is, but right now they're loose and in their, in the community. We did have a person who was mauled in our community. And I would hate to see that happen to a child or to another individual who's walking with their pet or walking with their child, and it's a safety concern. Another thing is that on Saturday, I didn't write that down, but I just wanted to mention, when we got home, there was a car parked in our driveway. We didn't know who that individual was. The individual was slumped down. My husband went to the windows, knocking on all the window. He was not responsive. We could tell that the individual was breathing, but we didn't know what he was doing there or what was going on, and just out of fear, we didn't want to open the door and startle him. We don't know, you know, in this day and age, if anybody has a gun or, or what. So we called nine-one-one and had an emergency medical response that came. Thanks to Martindale Police Department, they're, they're rapidly and quickly handling um, they want to go volunteer fire department, which is the Luling PMS. And the individual was responsive after they opened the door, but he didn't know what he was doing there, how he got there, or like, what happened. So that's just another kind of concern that's going on right now. We know what happened to the last individual here who pulled up into a driveway, and the homeowner didn't know what was going on. And, you know, the person who was in the car did thank us because we allowed them to park there. And then after he was released from the hospital, he was able to come and get his vehicle and, like, thank us. So, you know, I'm glad that he was okay. One more thing I'm gonna finish is we are having the Dark Sky movie here. I am very proud of Martindale, of the Dark Sky ordinance that's here. I would like to suggest, I know that it was brought up to the producer from the movie, that the light that is right there, it is going to, the light, the way that it is whenever we're showing the movie, that it is gonna project a lot of light. It would be amazing if we could get that light before the movie and Dark Sky compliance. As far as the Kelvins, I don't think it would be that much, but that would be a nice way to show how Martindale's good stewards of the environment and how we take our dark skies, you know, seriously. So the movie premiere, well, the movie's gonna be shown on November third, and if we could get that light changed out, that would be really amazing. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to mayor's report. Can I take it? You're Diana?
No, I'm here. I'm representing the U C.
Yeah. Um, so we have a proclamation. I had it printed out on nicer paper, and then I realized I made a mistake. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this. Um, so this is gonna be a proclamation for Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas six point three million Texans have experienced some form of sexual assault in their lifetime, and whereas two in five women and one in five men have been sexually assaulted in their lifetime affecting all races, ages, genders, and economic situations. And whereas the Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided direct services to six hundred and sixty adult victims of sexual assault in Hayes and Caldwell Counties last year, whereas the city of Martindale is intolerant of sexual violence in any form and recognizes that education and awareness may prevent sexual assault. And whereas efforts to reduce sexual assault can only be successful through citizen involvement, and the safety of the citizens of the city of Martindale depends upon our actions to end sexual assault. Therefore, I, Catherine Glaze, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Martindale, Texas, do hereby proclaim October twenty-twenty-three as Sexual Assault Awareness and Prevention Month. And in testimony whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of Martindale this fifth day of October twenty-twenty-three. And so if we can kind of gather over here, we'll take picture. You'll have to say that. We're a tiny room.
I'll get in the back.
I don't know. I didn't understand.
Where do you want us, mayor?
I didn't understand that.
Where, where do you want us, mayor?
Oh, you know what? The tallest ones are gonna have to get back.
I'm a little. Yeah, of course.
Can you come up here with me? I'm shorter peoples.
I'd rather not be seen.
What about tall people? You've got some.
Why don't we all just stand up here?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, here.
Okay, I'll, I'll get back from this side.
Who can do this table?
This is the first time we're doing a table. This is, this is the big.
They're on wheels now.
That were made on the table, so she wants to, she wants to get the value. Come on, guys. Come on, then. Gotta show some enthusiasm. There you go. Enthusiasm.
Oh, sure.
They're gonna be underrepresented.
Okay. This is yours. This is yours. That's mine over here.
Oh, yes. Yes, please.
Hi, my name is Dr. Mia Painter, and I'm a board member with Hayes Caldwell Women's Center, and I've been a resident of Martindale for thirteen years. So I just want to say thank you to our mayor and the members of Martindale City Council for recognizing October as domestic violence where it's not. H C W C staff and board would like to sincerely thank you for your time and effort in helping support the fight against domestic violence. In two thousand twenty-three, Hayes Caldwell Women's Center provided face-to-face services for nine hundred and seventy-eight victims of family violence in our total service area and eight thousand ninety-three days of shelter. Eight victims from Martindale received direct services from the center. Every year, the demand continues to rise as not only our population grows, but also the community's increased awareness and compassion for survivors of domestic violence. And so I appreciate you bringing awareness to domestic violence as well as the services that are provided to the members of your community. And so thank you for being a part of that change.
You're welcome. Thank you. We did have another proclamation for World Teachers' Day. So I'll go ahead and read this one. Whereas Martindale, Texas, future strength depends on providing a high-quality education to all students. And whereas teacher quality matters more to student achievement than any other school-related factor. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lesson plans and supporting students. And whereas our Martindale teachers have demonstrated great resilience, adaptability, and creativity during the COVID-nineteen crisis. And whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. And whereas teachers can, it is a statewide movement supported by more than a hundred and fifty partnering businesses and organizations committed to elevating the teaching profession and honoring the critical role teachers play in the success of Texas. And now therefore be it resolved that this Martindale City Council joins TeachersCan and its partnering, partnering entities across Texas in celebrating World Teachers' Day and proclaims October fifth, two thousand twenty-three to be Martindale Teachers' Day. And be it further resolved that the Martindale City Council encourages members of our community to personally express appreciation to our teachers and display a blue light and a blue ribbon outside your homes or businesses the week of October the fifth as a symbol of support to our educators. And so we have an educator in our midst, and we want to tell you thank you.
Thank you.
And we were gonna have a representative, but I guess they weren't able to make it.
That means, that means a lot. The teachers do work hard. I mean, I see them, the, their dedication, so I mean, definitely, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So you're welcome to stay for our whole meeting, but we won't be offended if you want to leave.
I'm gonna excuse myself. I unfortunately have another meeting to run too, but I appreciate you talking to me.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Thank you.
So I have just a few other things to say. Adrian and I did, if you hadn't heard, Steve Ramsey had passed away. And Adrian and I did slip into Austin Tuesday morning and went to his, his service. We didn't stay for graveyard service, but we did attend his service. It was very sad. He was just seventy years old.
Seventy.
Just turned seventy this year. So that was very.
What a professional.
Yeah, he was really, a really great person.
Nice of you guys to go.
Yeah. Adrian didn't know him that long, but he was really touched. I was really touched that he was really great to work with. National Night did go off really well for not having done it for quite a while. We thank our chief for wanting to do that. So thank you, chief, if you're still there somewhere. Probably next month when he does his report. One of the things that he has brought to our attention is that a company now, I think it's called Colo-Link or something like that, used to be, we called it CopSync. The state of Texas has made some training mandatory. It's a one-time fee of two thousand five hundred dollars, which we're going to ask our city manager to authorize our accountant to pay. We have no choice. But I just wanted to let the city council know that we're gonna have to do that. It's mandated. They didn't give us the money to pay for it, but we have to pay for it, so.
Is that per person?
No, for the whole department.
Oh, that's better.
So in the packets, I did include two proclamations from Capcom, just for your information, that, that they had done in September. But I'm not gonna read those. So we'll just go ahead to the city administrator and the legislative update that we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, so some council members may, may know, I don't know if we've discussed this. I might discuss it with individuals one-on-one. But the, the state in legislature passed a new act this past term that allows for any property owner within an extraterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, of the city, to disannex themselves upon a petition submitted to the city. And the city has no choice on whether to accept that petition or not. It, you, the city council may pass a resolution ordinance acknowledging it, but there's no requirement to do so. And after, I think it's forty-five days, thirty, forty-five days, it becomes effective.
Quick question. Has any city in the, in the state taken this, taken this act to court? Has there been any kind of?
So there, there were several lawsuits filed by cities in their districts regarding new acts that were passed. I thought this was one of them, where this was being litigated. I couldn't find evidence on that, on a quick Google search. Other ones that had to do with the, what's been named the Preemption Act that says a city can't regulate within certain areas of the Texas code, or agricultural code as an example. A city can't have any standards that, that differ from what's on what's the state standard. But create a, a level playing field across the state. This one, I, I did not see. I thought there had been, but I was saying, I'll dig that up. Other city councils are struggling with this. Buda's struggling with the big one right now. Colleen has, has an issue coming up. Seems like a lot of this was, was coming out of the Houston, Harris County area and how they're pursuing the ETJ and how it was being used there. And also has it reflects on annexation. But annexation rules have changed so much in the last four years anyways, from the twenty-nineteen legislative session. There really isn't a lot of deed for the ETJ from an annexation perspective, which is what it was intended to do. The intent of the ETJ was to set up some planning structures so that when the city naturally grows over the course of a number of years, that when those properties are annexed in, they align, follow in with the framework of the city. How the infrastructure played out, another thing.
Well, real quick, you said Buda and other cities have, have, have.
Have had these issues come.
Have they, have they done lawsuits or is it in the courts?
Not that I would worry.
Okay, I can.
I talked to T M L two days ago, talked to Pat over there, and he, yeah, he said.
I guarantee.
They're, they're distraught. They, you know.
So, so.
There's so much that is happening right now. There's probably so much that is happening.
So I mean, I just, it's hard to believe that a city of any size would, like Houston or Austin, would, would be lording it up for that.
I, it's, it's hard to know what, what. It's something we could talk with the attorney or future counsel, ask him for assessment on, you know, what stand the city might have to fight against this. I don't think there is much, but.
So I guess, I guess he is around gonna ask you the question. It's like, so for example, they de-annex or not, or they leave our ETJ, and it goes to court, say somebody, Buda, and then all of a sudden, it, it's reversed. Then would we automatically, it would be come back into our ETJ?
It would, that sort of, of thing would not be resolved quickly. And as a practical matter, even if it did get resolved, the petitions to remove the ETJ are nullified, and that comes through, you know, five, ten years from now, whatever, maybe sell that. A lot of these places will be built up by then, and it's not really gonna happen.
So, one more question. So we build a sewer plant.
Yep.
Yeah, well, that's. And they, and, and we build a sewer plant, they want to hook up, and they're, they're, they're not.
So this is, this is one of the things where if we do build a sewer plant, that's something that's, we've discussed in prior meetings. We'll talk in future meetings what we want to do about, going about getting a sewer plant. This ETJ rule limits the, the strategy that the city might want to employ and how we service, and whether we wanted to create a certificate of convenience and necessity, C C N, creating a jurisdiction for sewer treatment. Without the ETJ, without the application of subdivision regulations, and with really, without any hook, paying these developers to help enter development agreements, if we do have a C C N at that point, we would have very little to negotiate with them on regarding the, the design of their, their development. Because at that point, they're out of our jurisdiction completely. And so they would just, we would have, they come to us, make an application for treatment services, like the water company now, as long as it meets the requirements of that application, we have to provide services. So that might be something where this rule might change whether we go forward with C C N or not.
That's really our only option, right, is to prioritize a strategy to figure out how to hook these people in so they want to be in our ETJ.
Yeah. Well.
You gotta figure out how to leverage it. That's, that's pretty much.
Yeah, so both of these tracks have come before city council with development agreements that have been turned down. And now both those tracks are removing themselves from the ETJ and from the jurisdiction of the city. I'd expect that trend to continue going forward. I'm wondering, and that's, that's what Buda and Colleen and these other cities.
I'm wondering if there is, this is for another discussion, just brainstorming, so continue on, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you could have a lot of this area, oh man, San Marcos didn't overran with them right now, I know that.
Well, you know, I, I do have contact with a couple of council folks in, in San Marcos. And I did, yeah, I was asking about that, you know, HK development was not in C limits, the buying group is. And, and what I was told, they're still in negotiation, so I don't know what that means. So it's not, it's not, because they, they're, they're looking at.
San Marcos speaks for themselves. I don't know if that's how active that negotiation is anymore.
So then it goes to county then.
Yeah, so this, this, this is kind of where this natural leads to is the state has set up a regime where the counties are fairly weak in land use regulation. They're removing cities' ability to regulate land use within their jurisdiction with the Preemption Act, and then also within their ETJ through this, this annexation act. And without making the county stronger, it's going to be very much more of a laissez-faire development regime, which for some, there's winners and losers for some, that, that could result in, you know, continued more affordable property. There's losers because you don't have the ability to strategically control what, what happens on, with your city and its growth. And so you're gonna have a lot, you're gonna have a hundred years from now, fifty years from now, the cities are gonna have a much smaller plan.
It's planned by the state. State does it on purpose. But, but, but again, I can't believe that there has not been an uproar from the. But, but, but again, I can't believe that there has not been an uproar from the cities, the larger cities, because that's.
There, there has been, I just don't know what.
That is.
It's so new.
So, what, what is, what, what can we do, we just, that we can do?
The reason why I've included this as an administrator's report instead of a discussion action item, or a recommend command to include us as a reports of action, is because there's no action to be taken by the city. So, larger cities are running, like I think someone said, maybe they, Sam Marcus is getting inundated with these things. Martindale could be in the same place, I'll continue to provide a report when we get them, but since there's no action for the city to take, I don't think it's worth taking a whole lot of the agenda time.
So, real quick, so the petition, that goes, that goes to the state?
Of the state, and then the city basically verifies the signatures, the property owner information, and then that's, that's it. The one wrinkle on this was is like the Sigmund Grafton. Are they currently the property owners of that title change hands, I don't know.
Yeah, that one, the one that they're talking about, yes.
Yeah.
The land that was next to it, that they, no, we never.
Never flipped.
Well, they're gonna kill the cities, cities are gonna die, I mean, pretty much.
We're gonna lose our ability to control what happens in your backyard.
So, then the city then wouldn't feel like they wanna, I mean, what about expanding the ETJ in the future? Will that even happen? Because usually it's what, a half a mile from the city limits?
So, this, the law also had some things to do with the jurisdictional boundary advancement as the city expands. I'd have to get more about that, I know there's a provision in there, I don't know how to affect Martindale.
But it seems sort of self-defeating, I don't know.
Yeah, if we went out and got more landlords to come into the ETJ, they can leave the ETJ tomorrow, that's common, it's co. Yeah, I don't. I have to look closer into the annexation, I think. You can only annex, there's certain rules regarding annexation that apply to your ETJ, where you have, that has to be in your ETJ to annex. Don't know if that's in every case, I think if someone petitions to come into the city, I don't know if it's the ETJ first. It could just be a petition. The city, wherever, to put it to a vote, you know, of a, of an area to join the city through annexation, that can only be done within the ETJ. So, if you have enough of these that opt out, then you're not gonna have that ability to annex those properties.
But I'd like, I would like to know the status of Sam Marcus, if we build a plant, get a grant, build a plant, and then they wanna, they wanna hook up to our treatment plant.
That's why we would not do a CCN, so that we would not, would not be forced to provide those services.
Yeah.
So, we would, we would have the ability to tell them no, and the ability to tell them no would increase our bargaining position.
Leverage.
There's a way to do it, David Price discussed that, there was a way to.
We can do impact fees, I know that's.
There was a way to set the plan, you know, in motion, to get the money, get the plan, and then as they become available, then there's a negotiation, go to the developer, say, look, this is, you don't have to go and build one. Look, we're hooking up, but this is the consequence.
It seems like, it's just Pete saying this, but it seems like for the survival of the city to grow, that we really need to get treatment plan for negotiating.
We need some leverage.
We have, we have, we have zero leverage.
We need a plan in place, that's what you said, maybe if we don't do it, that's what we can do.
So, treatment plan would be, would be a big one.
Yeah, prior to this, we have very, very little, little to negotiate on.
It really does hurt us, because I mean, if you think about it, I mean, I don't know if the numbers are, I wouldn't even guess, but like, that's a pretty, it's a pretty large amount of tax revenue right there, there's gonna be commercial in both of those.
It's probably about a million dollars a year.
Yeah.
If it's fully developed, a million dollars in property taxes, not let alone with the sales tax could generate.
Also gonna, it's also gonna influence our decisions going forward when somebody does come to us with, hey, we got, we would like to develop an agreement with you guys.
In most cases, at that point.
I mean, that's kind of where I'm.
But then we don't even know if.
This isn't a petition.
With, with the water. I mean, you know, with that, with that many houses coming to the area.
The water issue.
How is the water gonna be able to sustain?
The, the water issue solved, they got the Alliance Pipeline, thirty-six inch, coming from Wilcox, Aquifer, Northern Caldwell County, that's problem solved.
It's going all the way.
Sam Marcus, Buda, Saginaw.
Going that way.
Lots of water, so that all issue solved, so the next thing would be a treatment plan.
Let's, let's keep, carry on, I appreciate it.
But I thought, just to, just to kind of, I thought in reading the whole policy, what it was, there are certain guidelines that had to meet for people within a certain amount of population, there was like the population.
That's where they de-annex a subdivision, this is vacant land, they don't need anything that goes vacant land. This is vacant land, if it's a subdivision like a community that's in the ETJ right now, they wanted to get out of the ETJ, they would have to have an election of people in order to go out.
So, anytime they worded it, whenever it was presented before us, it wasn't presented as a subdivision?
Yeah, this is the new, this is based on the new law that's winning effect September first. And it basically says if there's, it's, it's the two-hundred-person residency in a subdivision. Anything other, if it's just raw land, which is what both of these are, as Jared said, it's a pass through.
But I thought every time they presented it to us before here, it was brought up as a subdivision already.
Wait, no, they, they were, they never made it, if you're talking about these guy, there was never a, a development agreement, complete development agreement with subdivision was never completed. It was, or it was step one, as he, as Mr. Osorun said, that's step eight, let's just talk about step one. He kept referring to as step one. Everything was step one, once I get you over there on step one, we'll talk about step two.
They proposed subdivision plans, but they never filed a subdivision application.
See, like I said, I think the only hope for the city is, I think we really need seriously looking at a treatment plan.
It'll help, but it won't fix everything.
No.
It won't fix everything, but I, I guess we need to really do our research to see, like, what Sam Marcus is going through. I'll, I will, I will contact my contacts and see what's going on actually with HK, because I, I thought that was a done deal, but we'll see. Because that's, that, that is huge. If these developers come in, they're gonna do like a KB home. Having wastewater is a big issue because they're gonna have to go through that process with the TCEQ, the permitting, all that stuff. And if we already have a plant that's permitted, up and running, that would be, I don't know, I'm no expert, but.
Can they tell me I have to do acre, like acre?
Yeah, you're on subject, he said acre.
So, on our map here, I see two seven seven four six as the scenic corridor right here, but then the land in the back is two seven seven four seven. Is it the acreage along Quail Run?
It's the area that's outside of our city limit.
So, it's all of this?
Yes.
And, well, the number on this is two seven seven four seven.
There might have been a typo on the agenda.
It's two seven, and so then the other.
That's one of the things we've, we're working with Caldwell County CAD, because when we get the meats and bounds, we have very little ability to map that out with a pen and pencil, to make sure they're talking about the right spot.
And then, so then the other is gonna be next to Westridge?
No, the other one is the, next to Scotty.
Landzola's next to Scotty, yeah. And actually, part of that is Sam Marcus ETJ.
Two seven eight nine eight, I guess it's here, yes.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, that's a Landzola.
That's Landzola, yeah.
But it's a different name.
No, it says Landzola and Sigmund Grafton.
First one?
Number one, it's Landzola.
Number two, two seven eight nine eight, okay.
That's Sigmund Grafton.
Okay.
And part of that's inside the city limits and part of that is not.
It's only the portion that's outside of the city limits, is.
And part of it was already outside the city. There was a pocket, there's a pocket.
Yeah, there's a little pocket where it's not already.
That's what that little L four, L five.
Boy, that's gonna change that smart terminal, boy, that's gonna put a, boy, that's gonna make a mess, man.
That might be one of the reasons they did all that.
Oh, a hundred percent, that's why the state did it.
Passed in May.
Hundred percent, that's why the state did it.
If they passed in May, they pulled themselves out, they don't care anymore.
Like, you know how much money behind that smart terminal?
First of all, B.
So much, you don't think somebody has influence in there, think the lobby is chirping.
Okay, Dwayne's absent tonight, but he did leave us with his report. So, if you wanna take a look at it, ask Jared any questions.
Answer most, most questions you guys have.
Okay, I got one.
Yeah.
Okay, group insurance expense was, budgeted for fifty, we're only at thirty-three, we really got that low?
Scroll down, so, yeah, our group insurance rate, when we were looking at the budget last year, we were using numbers from the year prior, but we switched our plans to basically be a high def, full base plan.
Okay. Which is a huge difference.
Which is saving savings to the city. So, yeah, that's, that's what.
Can I recommend that Dwayne's report's done on the second meeting of the month? And that way, we're not getting stuff that's six weeks behind, because all, every time he gives a report, it's August.
I like that.
You know?
That makes sense.
So, technically, the year's over, and so now we've gotta wait another month, you know, to kind of make. Just a, just my, my little.
I'll take that back, Paul.
Just my little quirky thought, you know?
So quirky.
Makes sense.
That'd be a good nickname for you, Corky.
Yeah, I've got one for you, Mr. McClaff. The mic is live, so.
Okay, is there any more questions on the report? Financial report.
Moving on.
Cut it with a knife.
Okay, if there's no questions, we'll move on to.
Well, well, I'll, I'll just ask, sorry.
Okay.
Go get them, Sam, go get them.
I may not be in appropriate time to ask about this, about the Park Mobile money that was a restricted fund that was created, and then the money was moved to a general fund. But if, and so I think I would just make a motion when the budget is balanced out, say, to say, I make a motion perhaps to, to move that money from fiscal year twenty-three back into the restricted fund.
Yeah, so that would be something that I'd recommend the city council consider once we have the fiscal year close out, that's, that's probably the obvious to do with that.
But, I mean, just, just as a strange question, but if somebody individually can move the money from the Park Fund into a general fund, then why does it have to take the council to then make a motion to do it? Couldn't that same act just be done in reverse? I mean, what, who, who had the ability to do that in order to transfer the money from the restricted? Was, it wasn't restricted, but how was it that the Park Mobile money that I and others worked so hard on implementing and creating, all of a sudden, wasn't there anymore? Or the money was moved into the general fund?
No, so, 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 any, anything that doesn't have a ordinance or state statute restricting its use goes into the general fund, unless it's a business line item like, like the utility. And so, all, all receipts, you know, revenue receipts the city gets goes into our general fund. And so, that's where the franchise fees, property tax, sales tax, all revenues go, go in there. We were created an ordinance at the last city council meeting to establish a restricted fund for those, for those funds. Didn't make sense to once the fiscal year's over to look at what the balance that was generated in the prior fiscal year, and at that time moved into the general fund, which is now restricted funds in the spirit of what the council passed effective at the beginning of this month, so. It's, it's, it's still in the general fund, I don't know where, but it's not missing.
But there's an explicit monetary amount, it's not just like.
It, we can audit where the funds are coming from, and so we'll know down to the penny how much funds been generated by that activity, and we can move that activity from the general fund.
And then say if money was accumulated during the last month, the month of September, but then the city receives it on October first, is that also considered? That thus would be in the restricted fund, because it was accumulated after the ordinance, the ordinance was passed October first, and so the money collected in September, you would assume, would be in the beginnings of the Park Mobile's hearing fund.
In, in most cases, yes, we, we, it's a little technical, that's probably something like Dwayne wanna answer, but there's two ways to look at your accounting, one is a cash basis, one's an accrual basis. The distinction that you're getting at, Sam, is the difference between a cash and accrual based accounting. City governments do a modified accrual, so if you have, most businesses are gonna be somewhat different than what the city does in the accrual base side. All that to say, when we look at the revenues, we can look at the cash receipts on hand, in total, but then that entire activity is generated up to that date, and we can move from that point forward the amount into the special restricted fund. And so, whatever's in the general fund from that activity would be a net zero.
I just, I don't mean to be so, so, so about it, it's better when it's explained to me, and then I don't create other ideals. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
It's not, it has not been used on other uses, if you could, Adrian, scroll down.
But the general fund is, is large, it was three hundred and something thousand, isn't it, three hundred and three?
A little bit more, yeah, so our net on the general fund right now is a hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars in surplus.
That doesn't, that we don't quantify that until it's audited?
So, what we'll do is once Dwayne closes, closes out fiscal year, we'll have a number, and then we'll take action based on that number, and if this year's closing, then that will go on. We don't wait for the audit report to come in prior to allocating these surplus. Most of the time, what the city councils have done previously is moved all that surplus amount into a capital improvement fund that they have to pay for road resurfacing. So, maybe what Sam was getting to was if that money is not set, is included in general fund, and then we move all the general fund surplus into capital improvement fund, now the, that revenue that's generated by the parking activity, instead of going to the finance, they're not, they're not capital. We can make that distinction.
Happy with that, Sam?
Sounds good to me.
Good.
Thank you.
And you gotta remember too, you gotta give Jared credit, you're the one that came up with the Park Mobile, right?
Yeah.
We, we were looking at ways to generate revenue for a while.
That was a.
And Adrian did a lot of the heavy lifting, working with the vendor and getting the contract set up and the signage and.
Who came up with the Park Mobile, who found that?
It was an accumulated effort.
Yeah, it was something I was familiar with.
Actually, I had to, I gotta, I gotta, thank you, that was brilliant, that's been, that thing has been really good. Really, really, I like it, it's kind of high-tech and it's very inexpensive.
Only if you have better cell service, it'd be even better.
But we gotta thank, we gotta thank the police too, the joint effort.
We'll have a calling contract here soon. I don't know if that's on the agenda tonight, but if you have a question about whether it's out, that's right.
And I think Sam Marcus is gonna start their parking soon.
They say in September. I, I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to be rude, but I think we're like getting off topic a little.
Well, let's continue on.
It's gonna be a long night and.
Let's go on, we're talking too much.
Are there any other questions on the budget?
Oh, I'm done, I have no more questions.
No more.
Okay, then Pete, it's your turn.
Pete, come up to the stand.
Well, the only thing that happened this month, nothing really.
Good. Good.
Good news. We had one power outage. We had one power outage that affected, uh, West Ridge all the way back to, back to City Hall. But the power was, it's still running, but. And, uh, we did our month, our regular stuff, or we did no irrigation this month because we had that broken sur- uh, effluent line. Finally repaired that Friday, so. And, uh, like the samples, we checked the pH daily. We did a lot of calculations on the flow. We checked all the panels, the wiring, controls and all there. And, uh, the ponds are still maintaining about six foot. Three bore. And I did, uh, let's see, I was talking, for the influence, we pumped, uh, one million, two hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and ninety-two gallons. We averaged about forty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-six on four gallons. Maybe it came up a little bit. I think this restaurant fixing to kick in. I'll be monitoring the flow a little bit. There it goes, and, uh, the maximum flow is a hundred and thirty-three thousand eight hundred and thirty-three. Uh, on the loan, it was like thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty gallons. And I made you all a couple of this, I guess I promised you on the call you said that they were pending. I don't know if the mayor. You handled that, did you?
I, I can put it up here. I got it, Pete, sorry about that.
Put it up there, here.
I wanted to give you all a copy personally, that way y'all can keep up with what needs to be done. These are, I know Jared's been working on this, we've been working on this for a long time, this station. Transfer switch, generator. And, uh, a pump we pulled out the other day, we, it's in the shop, I haven't heard anything from that guy, see, but it needs to be repaired. I knew, so, that's still pending. The lift station, uh, on the Madison side, uh, we need to, uh, probably do some service on it, it's a little bit, it's been, been a while, it's an old pump, so. I got, we're going to pull it out and inspect. And the Marshall, another project that we're working on too, the, along with the the Crockett Lift Station, yeah, and Jared wanted to put some VFDs and some controls in that panel box. Now, I stress that, the bunks are high priorities, so we had.
Nice beat.
Yeah.
Good, good.
Uh, what about, I know I've mentioned this before, that broken sewer line that's over on Cemetery Road and Tree Lane. It what?
I was going to call you the other day to see where, where it was.
Uh, I, yeah, I wasn't sure if you and Sean saw it one, one night when you were out there or something. But it is, it's right at there at Southeast Road and Tree Lane, or where Cemetery Road is, I, I heard. I haven't seen it myself. But it, it, it's, rainwater is getting into the sewer line, which is then going into the treatment line, is what I heard.
No, you already know all about that.
What's that?
On, on Southeast River Road towards Tree Lane and all of that, where the crushed pipes are.
Oh, back here.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you run into anything that's both like that, is there any way you can locate it with something or?
I can put some flags there or something.
Okay, yeah, that would really help us out, okay, because, uh, that's one, that's a big thing we got to fix.
Drop a, drop a pin.
Send us a P.
It's, uh, infiltration for our system from little.
And then I had a citizen mention to me about the evaporative ponds, and I mentioned it to the police as well, about migratory birds that were possibly deceased there at the. And, and I, we weren't sure if it was gunfire or maybe from poisoning.
They couldn't find the birds.
Uh, well, have you seen dead, dead birds there before?
I have, in the past I have. Seen the, the skeleton remains.
Take the wrong.
All the blooming. Those, they, they migrate there during the winter.
But, I mean, up on the ridge?
Yeah, top of the burns, yeah.
About the snake, blood of snakes still?
No.
Hmm, well, I, 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 I'd like to see if they were shot at or not, but we won't know until we find them.
Let's go to the chief of this, this evening, the hall of glory. Next time I see someone like that, I'll take a picture and send it to you. Yeah, because the other day we were working on the sewer land, and it was real quiet, and after a while, and all of a sudden they started shooting.
Dub season.
I know there's, like the chief says, there's certain things he can do this. I don't know, it's out of the city, famous or something.
Well, may, or the lawyer said that was absolutely not legal, so.
It's absolutely not legal if it goes over the fence.
Yeah.
But then they're in the county, so they can shoot us there, and they have to prove it on the land.
Yeah.
So they may have to prove their bullets are actually going over the fence line.
God, leave those bullies.
Got them.
Got them.
And, uh, also, and I wrote another list here about, uh, yearly maintenance that's required of the system. That's like cleaning the sewer lines and also, uh, taking the pumps out and servicing them out, you know, changing the hole, it's all done yearly. And expecting all the manholes to town for leakages, so that way no storm water will be getting in. And also, uh, and also the generator, it's, uh, needs to be serviced out once a year, once you get it going.
The one at, uh, Crockett?
Yes, ma'am.
It's up in the air?
Yeah, we need to really fix that one.
Now, does that go up and down so you can?
No, they, they built that, built it that way because it'd get out of the flood.
Yeah.
Because when it flooded, it got into the.
Right.
The strator. But, uh, but, uh, I can get you all a copy, or the American can give you all a copy of them, hang them up somewhere.
I think you.
I'm sending it to them right now.
And we can, uh, at least tackle them a little bit at the time.
It's good, thanks.
Could you write this one with a different pen or something? Because it, it comes across, and it's really not readable, that blue ink, I don't know what happened.
Low-res scan? Looks like they scanned it real low, or what do you?
Probably. Look at this one here.
They just scanned it low-res.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what happened?
Yeah.
Oh. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, but, uh, other than that, I mean, I know, I know Jared's been working on trying to get funding and all that stuff. Ever anything else, uh?
Not yet.
Yeah, because they're really going to get on the same speed. Well, one day you have to, I don't want to just save them.
Someone want to go to the wheelchair?
Oh, yeah.
Call, call that guy, get her a pump back.
But we also need to get that, uh, that pump hole. Yeah, that's ahead of holding this, oh, yeah. And then, I think I posted on there, I think I saved this. And also the.
A new, a new, a new price?
Yes, and updated. And also the, have you heard anything else on the string or the?
I was going to be on the grant, we got told we're going to get it, but we haven't actually received it.
Really, we need to, uh, volume out of the pond, so they won't put them on the pressure on, on the sewer line.
On the, on the irrigation lines, you mean? Is that what's popping them?
I think that's what's, uh, created a lot of pressure, black pressure. It's pretty real clear, that's, that's the main. The one, that's the one that. Just letting you know, it was because. I haven't defined it just on mine, the other one we fixed, because I don't know. Bring something else.
Okay.
Anyways, that's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Good report, thank you, sir.
Okay, so we're going to move on to point one. Um, our attorney has, uh, modified the lease for, uh, the Guadalupe Road next, between the Jimenezes and the new restaurant. And, uh, there's a couple of things that are different. One is, the lease is just with Mari, uh, known as Republic of Dog. I don't remember what dog stands for, D O G, but, uh, so it's just with him, it's not with three different people. And then on number five is what, uh, our attorney had pointed out, the assignment and subletting. Because, uh, council member, woman, club wanted to make sure that if, uh, the property was sold, that the new tenant would have to renegotiate the contract. Um, so the, the last sentence especially, if you look at that, let's see, each.
Yeah.
Such transfer assignment or sale is subject to tenants' obligations to landlord under this lease, and will not release tenant from its obligation under this. And that number five should fulfill that requirement.
That's good to me.
So what about the, is there anything about the maintenance of the grass or the road or?
I think that didn't change, it's still in there, yes, Adrian did.
No, they, they will maintain the road.
Yeah.
All the way down to the river?
No, we, we're not.
Just, just to the gate? And so then this. Yeah, so then the city would then have to mow the thirty-six feet from the gate down to the river?
Well, I think this lease will give him the opportunity to sublease to what either the Jimenezes or to Carl, Mr. Carl, um, if he so chooses. That's what it's saying in there. We will, the city will not have to maintain the rest of that, of the road to the river.
So he has authority all the way down to the river then?
Yes, he does. From Main Street to the river. And he wants to maintain that control so that he doesn't have the public just walking down to the river.
Yeah.
So if they need to put a fence and say on the edge, edges of the road past the gate, like say where Carlton's property is on the right side there, that would just be something that they would work on amongst themselves.
Yeah.
That, so they don't come around Carlton's property and then go down the road, which they have been doing now because the gate, I mean, now it, it's, it's a road and, uh, before, you know, it was just a big pile of dirt, and Carlton had been mowing all of that, I, I would assume, because he, he's got his land on either side and what we thought was a road.
It's really only special occasions that Carlton allows the pu- public to go down there.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to accept the modified Guadalupe Street lease agreement to Republic of D O G R O D.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, to accept the contract. Is there any more discussion?
Uh, yes, um, since I was in that one last meeting, I just wanted to find out, like, the, what was the, who were the, the three? Why is it only, um, why is Mr. Dominguez only on there?
Uh, okay, so he was wanting to make sure that the Jimenezes always had access to their driveway. And he didn't want to have to take care of the entire road. So he, he asked both the Jimenezes, Carlton, if they wanted to maintain that the rest of the road. And, uh, Carlton, Carl said that he would like to do that. So the city council last meeting did not want to have a three-way contract. They wanted to have a contract only with one entity. And so we asked our attorney to, to modify this contract to reflect that.
And see, so I just think that with there being like a land, there's landowners on all sides, that if the landowners so choose to want to be in a joint, like a joint endeavor in upkeep with the road, and then it to seem like, rather than going through one, one person, um, that that would, you know, I don't see why that would have not, uh, approved that way with the three parties.
I think it's cleaner for the city just to be involved with one person, and then he can sublet to Carlton, Carl.
He's already taking, he's already has an accrual with the East End and Guadalupe, with Carlton. So this land right here, that, down the cliff, and also half of the parking that he's getting, which is the forty-five feet, ten of it is from Carlton. So it's like, he's already got his own deal going on.
So Carlton's already involved right there?
Not with us, because that's not our land.
Not with us, yeah.
So, but it was just like, you want to keep, your relationship is your relationship, and so it became a, it was a convoluted mess, it was written by them, and it was basically cleaner. So it's like, okay, well, we're just going to keep it within one party's responsible. And one of the issues was the, um, and, and I made that point about the, my concern was, uh, a visitor is not local and staying there, and that's, it's supposed to be parking down that flooding, flooded area, and, you know, obviously it's underwater. Um, my concern is making sure that we're indemnified, and if you go to ten A, he's made that very clear that if anything happens that road, anything happens to those people, that's on, that's Mari. You can't come back to the city, he's been warned, you know, that's on you. So it's another way of saying, hey, this is Mari's responsibility, that parking and all that other stuff.
Yeah, because it is down over the bank.
Yeah, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a seven, eight-foot drop where the parking's going to be, so.
You, you mentioned two pieces of property that Mari would be leasing from Carlton. I, I see the five parking spaces, but what's the other piece?
There's, if you look on that one page that's the colored, it's the blue, it's actually just the, the, the dropdown that he's in the back, where his, where his fence is in the back now. It's the dropdown, there's, it's only a couple of feet. Because technically, that dropdown is Carlton's property. One more. Yeah, that one.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you go down, go, go back, go back to the top there a little bit, please. So you see where the parking is in the back, that orange and then it's blue?
On the right side, the orange.
Yeah, the left side, right there, yeah, so that blue is forty-five feet, and it's an incline down. I showed you guys the pictures, it's going down quite a ways. Um, so the elevation changed from the corner there where his property is, it's five twenty-two, and down there at the forty-five feet is five fourteen. So, but that's Google Earth, so it's, I think it's a little bit of a deviation, but it's somewhere in that seven, eight-foot drop. And then after that is there, and then if you run along the line going across to the right corner, along there, uh, go to the right, yeah. That, where that drop is, where Sean did all the work and, you know, redid the support.
Yeah.
That actually is Carlton's land, so he's got a lease agreement with him along the whole back end for a couple of feet of East.
Was Mari here last, the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We went into executive session. There was a lot of talk about the flood plain and issues and everything.
And then, uh, like, we as a city, since he's going to do a parking lot back there, we, that's permissible?
It's just for five, it's just for the people who would be staying in his apartment.
And it is right on the edge of the floodway, according to the map.
Okay, well, whenever I saw people being rough, carried out on boats.
Yeah, just to clarify, that, that property was underwater.
Yes, it was.
All, all, no, all of it, that was, but that was my concern, but that's passed. You know, I'm happy with the contract, the way it's written now.
It just gives him the five parking spaces for his tenants, and then he has three parking spots, the orange ones for his employees, and just before the Jimenez driveway.
And so the Jimenez didn't want to be included on the contract, and Carlton didn't want to be included on the contract?
Well, the Jimenezes, I don't know that any, any of them wanted to be included on the contract. Mari was trying to be considerate of them as neighbors, and wanted to always make sure that the Jimenezes understood that he would always respect their right to get to their driveway.
I, I think what might be helpful is if the Jimenez or the, um, Carlton, oh, they, they could enter into a similar agreement, propose a similar agreement to the city for, city to consider. Since the council was, let's just do one agreement at a time, or one individual property at a time. And because the city is still, it's still sitting in property, it's just a matter of providing another access point.
And I think it's just like a ma- a matter of like what we're trying to deal with, like as a city right now. Like, do we really want to take time and the effort and going into, you know, having the meetings and doing everything with three different property owners? Or are we just trying to like be encompassing and respectful of businesses and entities in here and all property owners? I mean, I'm just trying to like grasp some of that.
Some interest on other properties.
No, and so watching.
That's why.
Yeah, Mari approached us with this whole thing anyway, he's the one that approached.
It sort of streamlines it, it's sort of, I mean.
It's, it's, it's only because he's, he's proposing to begin.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the public can't go down there?
And so it looks like it is graded across those parking spaces underneath there. Uh, you see the parking spaces, and then the grading lines are running, but I don't know if that's true, because when I saw those five parking spaces, they were a lot lower down. I don't know. I guess it'll surprise.
And I think the city wants to help Murray. He spent a lot of money. And so let's help him get his business off the ground.
I think we're all, we're all agree with that one.
But I mean, yeah, I mean, I agree with that too, but like to me, he does spend a lot of money, but that's not gonna sway my reason on wanting to do more for somebody that has more money rather than somebody who's less that doesn't. It does, that's not the way that I view things. I think like, you know, as a city, you need to be consistent with your policy when we, you do stuff and if somebody wants to spend a lot of money, that's, like, we need to remain consistent with how we apply our city, you know, ordinances, what we're doing as a city for everybody. If you spend millions or, you know, hundreds of thousands, I mean, you know.
Well, well, I, I will say this, and I've, I've always supported that building. But one time, you, you've been here longer than, you've been here longer than me. They wanted to tear the building down. I, I've always, one of my favorite buildings and for, for me, this is being personally talking, to, to save an historic building and an old building is big for this city. Because this is what's so un- unique about Martindale is having these old buildings restored. So that was my approach to, to, to help him along the ways because that, that building was such a bad shape. It's amazing it survived. And I think that's, is really great for the city, for the history and the appearance of the city. Because, you know, Martindale's unusual. Most, most places, they're, they wreck all the buildings off and they put McDonald's and, you know, things like that, yeah.
Just one more question. So if we're gonna allow parking right there, where, where it's gonna be at, if Carlton wanted to do parking in the back of his area right there, are we as a city gonna allow that?
It's floodway there, mainly, mainly floodway.
I think he already does something. Behind his building, I've seen vehicles back there.
He has a, yeah, he actually has a, um, sorry, I'm sorry. He actually has a trailer back there right there.
Yeah. It's not for the public, it's just for people who rent.
We're not, he can't stop him from parking. What, all we're doing is we're leasing the road, which is our way. So that, and it's gonna close it off. So one of the things the Jimenez are very happy about is, it's gonna be private road, so no one, in theory, and just, because they're GPSing and they're saying, hey, I've accessed the river here. And so they're walking down there and then they go to the, they go to the left. And they see the Jimenez and she has to run him off. This kinda also solves that problem as well. And it, I'm not real happy with the parking. I hope he does a really nice job with the drive, with the, with the driveway and the parking spot. I'm a little concerned about that. I'm very concerned about that, but that's his problem. If he wants to try and take it on and he's gonna be responsible for it. Uh, the wording was added to be more protective of the, because they wrote the original lease. And so I know that ten A was added to be very clear that we are not responsible for any damages and ability. That's his, he's taking that on.
Our attorney might be online if you wanna ask him anything, but let me tell you, he's really sick.
Yeah, no.
Oh, what's wrong?
He might not be able, he might not have voice.
Do they have COVID?
No, he's just got a really bad cold.
I wanna see, I wanna see a video. I wanna see him.
Roll dance, roll man, kickin' the man's dance.
I'll see it.
Let you guys rest.
Give him a break.
He wrote the, he wrote it, so let him give him a break.
I talked to him earlier. He was having trouble talking.
We've done discussion, we got our second.
I, well, I, I just have one, one last question. Okay, real, real quick, on the, on the riverside of the gate, M H M S leased premises. What, what does that stand for?
I think that's Carlton's Martin Dale.
Historic, something, yeah.
Whatever they call their businesses.
That's the, that's, that was in the original lease. Uh, they, he described his, that's how I knew so much about it. And, you know, and I, I'd asked him also.
Okay.
You know, that's what was, that's what is all, all the parties were involved.
Okay, that's all I got.
Sure.
Does somebody wanna make a motion to accept this contract?
We did.
Yes, that's right. Okay. Motion, Sam, second. If there's no more discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Excellent, unanimous, excellent, good. Functional government is what we are.
All right, the next, uh, item up for business is we need to select a title company to pursue, trying to find out who the owner of the John Creighton Cemetery is. Um, we have come up with some information about that. The original deed was found by Quentin Matthews, which we passed on a long time ago. And then, uh, there's been articles and stuff we found online that at some point, they, the cemetery was given to a Baptist church that I don't think is my Baptist church. It's probably a Baptist church that doesn't exist. But there was a Baptist church on the, on the property that is now Meredith Evans. But that's been a house for a long time. So we're gonna do the research. Go ahead.
Yeah, so, um, in order to complete the grant process, to do all of that work, um, we requested still work and request for qualifications from title companies. We had two respondents. Um, one response was a complete statement of qualifications, um, and, and located in, uh, Lockhart and so the others were not. So my recommendation to the city council is to consider corridor title for the award of the contract for title services under this grant.
Corridor, is that the one in Lockhart?
Uh, they're headquartered in Liberty Hill, but they have, they maintain a lockhart.
They're all over the place.
So it's a private cemetery, but it's in the city limits? And so the city wants to help them get their title because it's in the city limits?
What we're trying to do is, because we're performing a, um, simple, civil engineering work within their, their boundary of their property, we need to obtain rights to do so. And so we don't know who to contact to obtain those rights. So we're, we're doing, asking the title company to find, research and find the ownership, um, of that property.
So, now, real quick, I don't wanna get in your business, but remember Vanessa with the Cochran property? Independence Title, I think she did a great job.
She did do a great job. Unfortunately, when we asked for a request for qualifications, they responded with a real basic email that said, yes, we're interested. So under the, the procedures, we asked for a request of qualifications, we did not necessarily receive a qualification statement from them. So while they, they've been very useful in the past, they did not comply with our qualifications request, other than.
I mean, she was very experienced. I mean, I was very impressed with her. Oh, I was very impressed. That's Vanessa with Independence Title.
At a Lockhart?
Yeah. Very good, I think. The Cochran was a very, very complicated, but that's just.
She spent a lot of time on it, too.
She did, and, and then charges. No.
Well, it doesn't make any sense.
She's, well, that's why I kinda mentioned, but.
City council could go with Independence. I'm just.
Can we?
I, I like, I, I, Corridor does a really good job. I've used them for a lot of my deals as a Realtor, so, and I've never, they're really good communication. Especially when San Marcos.
The cemetery was gonna be quarterly. I've talked to Ms. Woolley about it. She, she has a lot of documents with regard to that as well with Quentin, um, and also the, the neighbor, um, is gonna send over some information. So hopefully we'll get something to you guys by, on Monday.
Well, this, this is gonna be a hot, this is gonna be a hot topic, so whatever you guys think, I'm flexible.
Is there a budget limit on, on this? I mean, we're, you're a- asking us to approve this, but I mean.
The cost of the grant.
The what?
Did you cover all of the cost of the grant?
The grant funded.
We're not paying for it. The city isn't paying for it.
So you're, we're also rising, what we're, what we're asking for is to, to enter in a contract with one of these title companies. And then when we give them a specific project to research, they'll provide us a flat fee for that research and proceed.
I just, I just brought up Independence Title, because.
We, we did not give them the, the property, this, because there might be more than one property you end up using under this grant, but it's initiated because of the.
So we have to give permission for the grant writer to do something involved in this? I mean, but, I mean, doesn't the grant writer sometimes try and find titles or, or?
No, no.
Where the grant's paying for it?
Will it go through the title company?
Yeah, they, they, they're contracting this out.
Uh-huh.
All, all the reason I mentioned that is I, I had a very good experience with Vanessa. I, I thought she was a real player.
She did, she did excellent on other, other work with the city for sure.
Well, I will make a motion, uh, to select corridor title as a title company for the G L O mitigation contract number two-two dash oh eight five dash oh four zero dash D two eight eight acquisition process.
One second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to roll more clarifications. So you said Dennis Dennis Title did not, you thought Jared did not have the, did not respond with the right answer for his qualifications?
We asked for a statement of qualifications. They did not provide a statement of qualification.
Was there a reason why?
I think it was just their prerogative to send what they wanted to send in response and they did not include it. It's got a statement of qualification.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 No.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, so the motion does carry to higher corridor.
Can I ask one?
I'm against any people on this grant right now.
Um, so, okay, so we're gonna move on to three point three. Uh, motion to select a nominee to award Martindale I T services. Okay, Adrian has done a lot of work on this. We've been talking about, uh, getting a new I T company, possibly. Not, we might, we might not. So.
Yeah, so, so we were able to, um, do you wanna hold on just a second? I'll give you kind of a, a quick summary of what we're asking for. What we ask companies to do is provide a, a proposal to, that would achieve what we're, our scope of work. Our scope of work included transition services, going from one company, uh, to the next. And then core managed I T services, cloud services, desktop applications, support, hardware maintenance, software maintenance, server administration, network administration, those sort of things, help desk support. We went out for several months. We had the RFP go on the street in July. Initial response due date in August, received multiple questions, posted responses to those questions on our website and then extended our due date submission to September. So it's on the street for about sixty days, almost ninety days. We committed to review their proposals based off their approach, their cost, past experience, their staffing experience, the locality and their past performance. The, the two rel- highest relative weighted factors were their approach and methodology to achieve our requirements and the cost. On total, both of these companies, uh, we had two respondents. Um, our incumbent, uh, search provider chose not to participate in our.
Really?
Um, and so we had two vendors, um, outside vendors for, provide responses. Both of those vendors provide responses, um, qualified vendors. They're, they're, on their approach, they're, they're within, you know, they're, they're very similar. Their past experience and, and pro- both of them have worked with other municipalities. One is more local, located in San Antonio metro area, the other in the Austin metro area. Both have worked with cities of various sizes, county, school districts. Their staffing and, and is on par with one another. Their locality, because they're both outside of, you know, this core San Marcos, Lockhart, Martindale area. I would view them to score the same, San Antonio versus Austin, maybe a little bit away to Austin, but not, not a whole lot. And then their past performance, from what I could tell on their submissions, that they're both had, had, uh, good past performance. So it comes down to cost, and that's what Adrian's about to show. Adrian did a lot of work to go through our prior invoice statements and look how it costs, because different proposals are going, and different companies are going to, um, price their services differently. And so up to the minute before this, this meeting started, we're revising to, so we could show council a good apples-to-apples comparison. So what the, the costs are on screen are, are not exactly the contract cost, but it's meant to show what similar services cost would be from one vendor to the next. And so, um.
I did, I just wanted to interject one thing. Um, what you were asking about a little bit, one of the things that Microsoft provides is so you can do reports pretty well. And both Jared and the chief would like to have a Microsoft. And our current provider does not like Microsoft. So he, he feels it isn't safe. They feel it isn't safe. So I just wanted to make that comment.
That, that's a good comment, thanks, sir.
Yeah, yeah, go for that one.
You got a comment?
So, so here, um, focus on the, the, the black chart. What you'll see here is the different costs over a period of time based off of our historical costs that we've incurred. In all, for our incumbent vendor who's in blue, costs are dictated by service ticket, help desk calls and time time spent responding to those help, help ticket calls in addition to data storage and, and backup. Um, and so it's a lot of variable costs. The, uh, next vendor in yellow similarly charged a rate for help ticket calls. And so it's using our historical, um, data, we have prior tickets. You can see how their costs would fluctuate over time compared to, um, our other. And then you'll see the, the orange, um, a vendor providing us a flat rate. And what, which is more in line with the RFP. What we ask for in the RFP is we want help ticket calls, password reset type of things to be part of the monthly fixed price that you charge. And so, um, you'll see that reflected in that.
Do they, do they have work? Do they have, is the red or the orange, they have work?
Yeah, they, they meet all of our needs in the, the RFP.
You know, I'm.
The, the difference, what is not shown on this is the transition costs. The, the vendor in orange has a higher transition cost. It's about nine thousand, almost ten thousand dollars to transition in. The one in yellow, that was about five to seven.
One time, no annual fees?
No, that's a one-time cost. And then after that, it's the, the monthly fee. It's not exactly what's depicted here, because we're trying to, again, we, we adjusted it, showing apples to apples.
What are the others, uh, transitional?
So Versio, because they neglected, there wouldn't be no transition costs to stay with them. So you just continue on. The other was about seven thousand dollars.
Not too much.
And what about the monthly fee?
The monthly fee was about the same, but the difference is the cost for password resets and.
Oh, you have that variables.
And that, those variable costs and, um.
Storage.
And so if, in, if we did not have any help ticket calls and, and some, I think their storage is flat up to a pretty high level.
Yeah, that's my next question.
As long as, I think it's two terabytes for one and about the same for, for the other.
Is there tiers to that flat fee? It gave, we're using a certain amount of storage or?
So, there, there are tiers, um, depending on the, the configuration of our servers. If we go to a completely virtual server environment, it's about five hundred dollars more expensive, four hundred, four to five hundred dollars more expensive a month than to maintain an onsite server in addition to, um, cloud-based storage. So there are degrees of, of things. The other thing that might come up in the transition is any hardware refresh. And that's not really gonna be known to any of these vendors at the moment.
Give the quote.
Get them on site, then buying hardware, buying at market rate. And so, um, I'm not too concerned about the cost. There'll be costs to say for sure. There's not a lot, I wouldn't expect to be a lot of difference in the cost.
So I guess with the, the tier, back to the tier, uh, avenue there, that's, um, are we close? Like, would it be, there, there's not, there's a good.
Right now, we average about sixty gigabytes for all of our city here.
Yeah.
And that's tier, tier one for both of these companies is one terabyte. The hundred dollars is.
Yeah, yeah, that's fair.
Next tier is two terabytes. So we're about a tenth of.
I, I guess, but, yeah, my question, you guys use a lot more than I do. What, what do y'all, do you have a preference?
The preference is getting, in, in using the Versio provided open source emailing services. It gets the job done, but. It gets the job done, but it makes it difficult at sometimes when you're trying to do collaboration. Um, especially when we're, we don't have a, an internal website to share documents. We don't have the ability to you, to leverage Microsoft Teams, which is very prevalent in the business environment now for collaboration within workspace.
Yeah.
Um, where you can create workflows and automate some things, chat functions.
Yeah, I love that.
Um, there's, there's a lot of benefits to switching vendors. One of the main benefits that is having more reliable costs going forward. Having more fixed costs. It's easier to budget. And so, um. Overall, it'll be more expensive on this contract to, to. Because we pay for our Microsoft licensing outside of our services right now. So that's one of the reasons why we had to do some math, show apples to apples. So our IT services contract, that bill will go up. But there are other bills that this pays, pays for, like our Microsoft three sixty-five accounts. They're shifting out of our own credit card, you know, subscriptions and going on to this contract, so.
Do any of those, um, proposed, uh, currently serving other city entities?
Yes, um, I'm not, well, first of them proposed, but uh both the companies provide, provide services to, to other cities of various sizes.
So like which, uh, any, like, could you, is, are there any that serve around here?
Um, yeah, so specifically, um, the one company BLS mentioned that they serve. Lockhart, Dripping Springs, Cedar Park, Georgetown, Smithville, um, various ISDs, Holland ISD.
Okay, because that's like, uh, Lockhart.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we have, uh.
Yeah, here it is. You want me to show this?
Uh.
So Adrian.
And the other one is city Castroville, so city of Uvalde, city of Alamos Park, um, and various ISDs and counties as well.
Adrian, I'm gonna ask you. What do you, I mean, you, you did a lot of computer work, more than anybody probably in the city. What do you prefer? I mean, you did the research, I'm asking you.
Are the, the, the consumer going after this? Because there's frustrations and this can.
Have I asked you, uh, do you like the orange, the yellow, the blue?
Well, the orange is. Yeah, the orange.
Do you go for the orange? I'm, I'm backing you. I mean, because I, I'm.
One of the benefits.
I'm not an expert. I know, I'm, I could barely turn a computer on, so.
The benefits that's not mentioned on this RFP, for instance, the yellow line, does offer additional services like, um, where I could connect my phone uh, to a city phone. And so you call me, you don't have to call my personal phone number to make city business. I could use a separate cloud-based solution, um, to do city business remotely, but.
Just say you like me.
Well.
YOLO has a lot to offer. The biggest thing on YOLO is just to have a variable cost department with help.
More, yeah. The, the orange does create a lot less stress for the.
You like, you like the orange? That's your point. Come on, just tell me.
First, first for Versio, the one that we're.
No, we're talking about the, no.
I was just gonna say, we're the only city they do.
Oh.
We, we had to make a.
Made a change to sound like, it's all.
I'm still getting my dear man emails. Then I need to send everybody a thousand dollars. The mayor's, that's not even the mayor sending me emails.
That's fair. My storage is about gone.
Yeah. Would, the orange and yellow do the same? The orange is cheaper, since the orange is.
I've been here, I've been so many years, but I, I gotta start deleting all that stuff, because my storage is almost.
Right, you, you, you won't have that problem with any other vendor.
But I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go with you, Catherine. Do you have problems?
Well.
The orange is probably what we should.
I, that's, that's all I gotta know. You prefer the orange.
Why are you paying, they tell us it's gonna be fifty percent more money based on your.
Ten percent. Ten percent.
When you're showing here, that's twenty-two versus thirty-three thousand.
There's a total cost.
The, the, the difference here in the last year is ten percent.
Oh.
But this is always gonna be more consistently cheap, unless we're strictly disciplined with our IT, make no calls. Yeah, you get Versio to be cheaper, but you, you're not gonna have these random spikes because a disgruntled employee or we have a cybersecurity attack. You're, the, the.
Cybersecurity attack to, to me, I don't need you.
Right.
Like, you'll probably call all, all these to bounce, yeah, to, to someone.
You, you can expect to, you could better plan for the city's budget with the orange line.
That's all I got to know.
That what, uh, Adrian was trying to say with the yellow, didn't need to phone service.
Well, that's what, that's what, that's what he was just asking.
But you're saving a hundred and twenty dollars a month.
Yeah.
It's not, it's still significantly cheaper, maybe even thousands is always cheaper if you go with.
Seven thousand dollars cheaper.
The problem in our office, everything is decrepit. The pho- the police need all new computers.
What do you prefer, Tommy?
Our phones are all very old and need replacing.
Tommy, what's your input?
I, I mean.
Which ones, the lockhart?
No, the orange?
Yellow.
Oh, what do you, do you look?
We need phones in the PD. I, you can't call back there to get the number of the PD. You gotta call somewhere else to figure out how to get to my desk. Others, I can't even call him on the desk. So we need that straightened out. Uh, some of the stuff, some of these tickets, uh, some of these call-in tickets that you see are probably from the police department because our, no, the system i- is old and needs to be updated and you can, with our current system, you have to call cop sync, which is our provider for our data in the car. But the way the IT had it set up, you can't just call cop sync and get them to fix it. You gotta call them and then call them and get them on the line together and let them.
So the orange work, was orange, oh, the problem?
It, it would, because you would have unlimited call tickets.
Hey, so you. I mean, I, I don't.
That happens a lot because of the system.
So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion, because. Uh, bum, 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 bum. I will make the motion to award, uh, HTS uh, as the IT service provider for, uh, Martindale IT service contract.
I'd second it. You got a second for me?
Does that include phone service?
No.
No, but they, I'm, I'm pretty sure they can provide that service.
They provide voice systems. It's just, it's just not.
They're doing, take your voice over right now, right?
They can.
Yeah, so right now, we're, we're using the GoFundMe.
Got it, yeah.
Switchboard, um, but when we up, we won't have to upgrade that, because the switchboard is not gonna be supported by the vendors.
Because you guys use it, I mean, so, what do we know?
So next, next meeting, we're gonna be asking to, for all new computers with our extra money.
I'm sorry, I'm, Sam and I have got that spent on parks. I don't know.
Well, you're just a little troublemaker, aren't you?
Corky action.
Corky, I like it.
Okay, we have.
Uh, thousand four hundred dollars.
What's the flatline orange cost?
Come on, wait, come on, dude, wait.
I, I can't see the numbers on this.
About a thousand four hundred dollars a month.
That thousand, that, that, about thousand four hundred, but that's, that's not their actual contracted, um, proposed price. The proposed price, um, was, there's two options, whether we go with a virtual server or not. The virtual server is more expensive, probably not necessary for our application. Um, which was significantly harder, that the, the likely what was going to be going with is just five, two thousand dollars a month.
I just don't see why, like, as a city, like, whenever you see that, that's just like the, the barely, the bottom, the bottom line. That's like, we're still trying to find cheap routes out. You know what? You're gonna end up getting what you paid for. He just said that, you know, that's not gonna be the actual amount. If we know that the orange, the yellow is serving Lockhart, you know, I, everything that I've seen, like, from Lockhart, I mean, they're right there, they're already, why wouldn't we want to go and like?
Copy Lockhart.
Move, you know, just like, there's somebody that's right there that's our neighbor that we know about. Who is the orange serving?
Uh, Castroville, Alamos Park, um, Uvalde.
Medina County.
Medina County, um.
Old County.
And. Yeah.
And I don't.
So it's, it's mostly, they're based out of San Antonio, so most of their cities that they're supporting.
And we didn't get that info, right?
I mean, sadly.
Uh, I believe it was made available if we wanted to come into the office.
So who do you guys wanna work, work with?
We just, we just been talking about it for the last thirty minutes.
You're agreeing with that?
Yeah.
We've been talking about.
Thirty minutes?
Yeah, well.
They want the orange, they want the orange.
Difference in, in the price evaluation does not outweigh, in my mind, the, the marginal benefits that could be provided um, by BLS. So the best value to the city is the HTS vendor.
And how long is this contract?
For, I believe we're going to have up to five years, um, as, but renewed each year.
Is there an increase?
No, not there for post-pricing.
Any more discussion?
Any.
So HTS is who you asked for, right?
Yeah.
It's lunch.
We got a motion. Go ahead.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Sonia's thinking. No, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I don't have no more discussion. Okay, I'm a no. Oh, should we vote individually or you want?
Whatever you want, boss, whatever you.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Three ayes. Okay, any opposed?
Aye, on me.
Split vote.
Well, not that split.
Sorry, Sam, sorry, Sonia.
So the motion carries to go. I'll be telling y'all that later on.
Yeah.
HTS. Okay, so we will move on to. Our last item of business to approve the minutes that are in your packet from March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
May I ask, what's so special about this that needs to be?
Um, we have been asked for this set of minutes from the fire department.
Look at that one. I missed that one. Dang, you're like an amateur.
We did, we did a public hearing with the ESD Fire Department with one thousand eight Northwest River Road. That was Martin Garcia and with four oh eight Lockhart. Um, that was, uh.
Right.
Top of the list.
Well, what happened with the ESD and the one oh, oh, Northwest River Road was that they were approved by default because they had passed that statutory limit for, um, consideration, so they, they were approved, but the, the ESD does need a written set of minutes to provide to the grant writers or whoever's administrating the grant for the new fire, fire house.
So this is just the minutes, but I mean, actually, it has nothing to do with the design or any of those things or that were the grants?
Oh, no, it's just minutes, just the.
I make a motion to accept the, uh, City of Martindale Special City Council Meeting Public Hearing Minutes from March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? Okay, hearing done. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain, abstain.
You weren't around, were you?
So the motion carries. Okay, then we're gonna go into executive session. We're all ready here. And we're gonna put Tommy in the hot seat.
So Dwayne, and Dwayne, we'll do Dwayne later.
Going to accept.
Yeah, I agree. Future thing, I got a future thing.
Right?
Yeah.
Right.
Oh, we'll have to do, oh, okay, we're live, we're back, and it is nine thirty-two. And so they, we will talk about future items.
Mm-hmm. Um, so are we having the, uh, hotel roundup? Is that October thirteenth, fourteenth?
No, it's the.
They moved to twenty-first.
Twenty-first, okay. And then do you think you will have the Heritage Tree or ordinance ready for future meeting?
Should be by the next one.
Next?
At twenty-first. At least a draft. That's something, that's something maybe, uh, you wanna handle that more in a workshop setting, or do you, you want, you wanna see early draft and provide me comments in advance? Be the email one-on-one, and I come back with a revision that tries to incorporate individual comment or workshop it? Or the line-by-line in city council? I mean, sometimes when we get into ordinance, it's like this.
You talking about the town?
Uh, no, this one's a Heritage Tree. And it's also gonna have some riverbank stuff in it, but, um, I follow it from, like, the lens a little bit clearer, but. It, it's.
October twenty-first was on the Airbnb's, and I think Matthew's done a lot of work on that. What's your money?
That's a little work.
I don't know what time we're doing it.
I won't be here on the twenty-first.
The, um, and so then the supplemental use table, you, you think you could pull out the R-two separate? Or do you wanna go through the whole, whole table? I mean, and, and also, I'm asking that because we have had some challenges in our other R-two zone across from me, so, I mean, I don't know. If, if we pass something, I, I don't know. I mean, could, do you want to single that out or just do the whole table?
Are you gonna wanna review it before we post it?
The R-two?
Yeah, because then we're gonna want to do the workshop.
Of the tech supplemental use table, workshop. Okay.
The reason why is because the supplemental use table right now is lacking definitions. We went through and defined most of those things in a draft at a workshop about two years ago.
Yeah, it was before I was there.
Right, right before, yeah, right before Catherine came in. So we have a good draft, we can go with what that is as is. Problem is, we have at least two new council members coming on. Um, mayor's now in her seat as mayor, so.
We may have to have a workshop.
Probably, probably wanna workshop that one. So on the tree ordinance, uh, what, what, what's council want to do? Do you wanna see draft orders, provide me comments, one-on-one, email? Um, you know, two weeks in advance, or do you wanna have a workshop and discuss it amongst yourselves?
I think, like, to have a workshop, because to do it that way, I've seen it, it seems to be more.
Effective.
Yeah, yeah. And then to do it during a city council meeting. But I think then, if anybody, any public.
I mean, any can give us in advance to digest, obviously, is beneficial, right?
And it just, it just matters in terms of how that's a calendar gets on a regular scheduled council meeting. The workshop something on the council meeting night. It can fill up quickly.
No.
You're absolutely right. Because the workshop conversation often book it for two hours.
I think that's all I was gonna ask, ask about. Anyone else have your agenda item concerns?
Uh, I wanted to add on the agenda for the second, uh, Wednesdays of every month to have a, uh, planning and zoning work session. Um, also the same thing with the listed, uh, line items. Um, you know, that I had discussed, like, for the code enforcement, it's like for our, I would like to see a running list of our permits, the de- the developed, potential developments, where they're at in that phase. But for us to go over that, the, every, uh, second Wednesday of the month. And that way, if we have to make any decisions on that, that way we're abreast of everything that's going on. And like, we should be able to just at a glance, see what's going. That way we're abreast of everything that's going on and like we should be able to just at a glance, see what's going on. In Martinville, just by looking at a report.
Does it sound like?
Do you wanna P and Z report, or do you wanna discuss it? Cause I'd be happy to to do a P and Z report for a city council meeting once a month.
I I just.
I don't know if it'll cover building permits. We'd have to work, I'd have to work with the mayor on on something like that.
Well, I mean, just like a running log, like a list, like it could just be a Google sheet or a a sheet, Microsoft sheet.
It sounds like what they're about to get into is that they're gonna have a uh project. Uh my, I'm, my brain's tired.
Well, you do teams and stuff in Microsoft, they have, you can do shared doc where you're view only, so you can see as the.
We do have that coming up.
Yeah, so like having like a list of the grants and where we're at with all the grants, where what, where are we stalled out, are we stalled out? Or something moving forward, when is that date happening, how are we communicating that, so on and so forth, so having, having a, to those tools for. Us to be able to stay informed of what's going on, would probably help out everybody.
Uh and just to be able to like, whenever we're discussing it, put it up there on the screen, we see X amount of per- permits. For this amount of time, we have this many discussions going on with this developer, this developer. Date that they submitted their application, this is a date that is like just a running list, just at a glance.
When it expires and all that.
If you wanna see a, a.
When the P and Z thing expires, right, cause they only, we have to make a decision on it within a certain.
Uh I, yes, I would like to see that, a- all of that information, it's just like at a glance.
Do you wanna see like a ongoing developments in City of Martinville?
Yes.
So we had three developers come into the city hall last month.
Yep.
On on subject A, B, and C.
These are the ones that turned in applications, this, they did turn it in, this is, this was just a uh discussion about this. So that way we know who we're dealing with, who we're talking to, where we're at in the process, the dates. Uh there's an open permit over here, like just the the reports on that.
Planning and zoning and building permits, anything that has to do with structures or ground?
Anything that we have to deal with in planning and zoning, if we're gonna be meeting like uh, you know, every second Wednesday of the month. I would, I would think that, you know, it would be like everything that would happen the previous month before and if they're running logs, but. Usually like if it runs into like compliance and we're having to have these things um done within certain dates. Like I wanna be able to see that here's when, here's when it is, this is what we're doing right now, and then that way we know. And at the workshop, we can discuss it and talk about it, rather than discussing and talking about it at the um city council meeting.
Cause I haven't had a planning and zoning meeting for a while, I mean, I don't know how long it's been.
You and my buddy McClav are gonna. Yeah, you're gonna, you're, yeah, let's do the, let's do a uh work session. That's all, uh I can do five o'clock, I could do six o'clock, I could do six thirty, whatever y'all wanna do.
Six thirty, six thirty work.
Kinda helps having that gap.
Okay, so like say, are you doing permits?
Yes.
Okay, so like when somebody walks in and like does a permit and you forward it to Bureau Veritas. You're gonna do permit for Suzie Q, she wants a to add on to her house. I submitted the request to Bureau Veritas this date, I, Catherine Glaze helped him. Somebody else came in, same thing with like development agreements or whatever were going on on there, just to have a running log of what's going on in the city. At these work sessions, we're able to see what's going on at a glance, and then we can discuss them further. Rather than being bombarded or like we're having to have a crash course when they. All this information, at least we have another week to digest it. Couldn't we do it on the same night that we already meet? It takes too long.
It's just too much, man, but it depends what's going on, you know, sometime we got.
We have a lot of stuff going on here.
Yeah, so they're trying to get the heck out.
What about the, what, how many permits do we have right now, well.
Nothing in fighting.
So then, okay, so then I think, I think I just would make it, well, I can tell you the permits we have.
Grants though, too, like.
We've got Joe Penali over on Bowie Street, it's uh down on Northwest River Road, we have an active format. And we just finished up, they got certificate of occupancy.
Well, what, 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 what about the road?
That road, Northwest River Road?
Well, he did the sewer line and he's gonna fix the road.
Yeah, we gotta.
We gotta go back and.
Well, yeah, he's gonna do it.
Well, they were the, yeah.
The city has to do it and then bill it.
So it's things like, like that, that, you know, we would be able to like make sure everything is on there, make sure everything is followed up. And like if we have to do it once every other month, then so be it, but I wanna be informed, I wanna know what's going on.
I I agree with that.
It makes us look more in tune with things going on because I have had some embarrassing situations where I just don't know. I say, I don't know, I can't answer your questions, cause I haven't been informed, you know, so. I I pretty much agree, agree with that. I mean, there's, I mean, even with uh what what was ha- happening in the gravel pit. It's like nobody knew about that until I raised concerns of of a trucks coming in every two minutes, coming and going. And and all that, of course, it's across from my property, but you know, this, I mean, none of you may know what what was going on there.
And so so then like with them being in a workshop setting.
The gravel pit was all gravel, oh.
He was filling in the floodway is what he was doing, you know.
Filling or removing?
Filling in, I think we could discuss that in detail in a minute, I'm not sure if that's a future agenda item right now, but.
We would be able to just uh discuss some of that, like, since there would be a work. We wouldn't be making any decisions, but we could talk about whatever, right?
You know, like um one of the great questions that Sam had brought up before the Landzola or Land of Wild subdivision at Riverview. Was the fire hose, um how, why can't we have a fire hose and making a distinction of the brush trucks and why they can't use that? Refill station as a um fire flow, um and it's because of the six inch line. Asking those kind of questions ahead of time.
Yes.
Definitely could help bolster drills, planning and zoning action items.
And then maybe like even if we need to revise some of our agenda stuff, if we need to go over some things that are going on to review. That would be a good time to do it.
I would rather keep it on Thursday, I don't do stuff on Wednesday night. I go to church on Wednesday.
Um or we could do second. Second Thursdays, second Thursdays and.
Second Thursdays, yeah.
Yeah, let's do second Thursday.
At six thirty? Is that okay with everyone?
Work workshops and work sessions. So no, no decision that.
Only, only just, yeah.
Real quick, does everybody know about the workshop on Monday? I know about that.
I sent a email at ten.
You have nothing to post on online?
We need to do that today, tomorrow.
Didn't get it posted today.
I make a motion.
Yes.
I second that.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye, see ya.